Welcome to the Monday, January 8th, 2024 Meeting of the Pittsburgh School Committee. I call this meeting to order. Okay, we will do the salute to the flag. And I will leave that. Pledge allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation on the ground, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Okay, in our agenda, the first order of business will be the oh, actually, I need to say about FATV is conducting an audio and video recording of this meeting for public broadcast. And I ask that anyone in the audience who's recording this meeting to please identify themselves for the record now by standing and stating your name and city of residence. Seeing none. Okay, remind everyone to put their electronic devices into silent mode. And to the agenda, the first order of business is the election of our vice chairperson. So I open nominations for vice chairperson of the school committee of the 2024 year.
I'd like to make a motion to nominate Mr. Pete Stevens to be vice chairman for the current year.
Okay, Mr. Pete Stevens has been nominated. Any other nominations?
Yes, I would like to make a nomination for Ms. Rosemary Reynolds to be nominated.
Okay.
A point of order, I think you need a second on my nomination before you can.
Okay.
Make nominations.
I second.
Thank you. Thank you, okay. And we have Rosemary Reynolds as a second nomination. Do we have a second?
A second.
Second, okay. We have Mr. Pete Stevens, Rosemary Reynolds. Do we have any other nominations for vice chairperson? Seeing none. Do we have a motion to close nominations?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Okay. Nominations are now closed. At this point, should we vote, should we take gold to action item to approve this nomination? Or should we?
I think Ms. Green was can do a roll call on the vote. And I think we would just say one name or the other in terms of who we're casting our vote for.
May I speak?
Yes.
We should have clarified that Pete Stevens is on the cellphone. He couldn't make it in person, but he is connected by cellphone. So this is Pete tonight.
Okay.
Thank you for joining us on the phone, Pete.
Thank you.
Okay, let's do a roll call vote for the vice chair.
All right. Mrs. England.
Pete Stevens.
Mrs. Jeffries.
Pete Stevens.
Dr. Knight.
Ms. Reynolds.
Mr. Walsh.
Mr. Stevens.
Mayor Squalia.
Pete Stevens.
The vote is four for Stevens.
Pete, Pete's on the phone. Does he get a?
Yes.
Mr. Stevens?
Yes, Mr. Stevens, yes.
Okay. One, two, three. Five, five for Mr. Stevens and two for Mrs. Reynolds.
Two?
Two.
One.
One, excuse me.
Okay.
If it's appropriate, I'd like to just move on this item now. Action item 24333, approve the nomination of Mr. Pete Stevens as vice chairperson of the school committee for the year.
Okay, move to take 24333 out of order. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, we will take a vote for, do we need to vote to take that out of order?
We do, right, sorry.
Yes, yes.
Yes.
And so if it's unanimous, we will take 24333 out of order. Seeing no objection, okay. We have before us 24333, a vote to approve the nomination of Pete Stevens as vice chairperson to the school committee.
Do we need to do a roll call vote since Pete is remote? Is that correct under current? Yes, okay.
Okay, Mrs. England. Do you approve? Or no?
Yes.
Yes. Mrs. Jeffries?
Yes.
Dr. Knight?
Approve.
Thank you. Mr. Walsh?
Yes.
Thank you. Mr. Stevens?
Yes.
Thank you. Mayor Squalia?
Aye.
Thank you. We are unanimous.
Okay, 24333 is unanimous. Congratulations, Pete Stevens, for being our vice chairperson.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, next, we have the school committee members and student reports. The school committee chair report. So first, I will report on the composition of the members of the 2024 subcommittees. And so we got these in our packets?
Yes.
So everyone got these in our packets. The only change that I propose to make is for the personnel subcommittee, Mayor Squalia to be the chair, and the members to be Mr. Pete Stevens and Mr. Jim Walsh. Okay? And so should I read that off for the public? So we have the resource subcommittee as Mr. Pete Stevens is the chair, Mr. Jim Walsh and Mrs. Deb Jeffries. The school building needs subcommittee, Mr. Pete Stevens as the chair, Mr. Jim Walsh and Mrs. Deb Jeffries. For the policy subcommittee, we have Mrs. Deb Jeffries as the chair, Ms. Rosemary Reynolds, and Mrs. Lindsay England. Student support subcommittee, Dr. Maritza Knight, chair, Ms. Rosemary Reynolds, and Mrs. Lindsay England. And on the personnel subcommittee, Mayor Squalia, chair, Mr. Pete Stevens, and Mr. Jim Walsh. Do we have any questions or discussions? Okay, thank you all for your service. Let's move on to the report of the resource subcommittee.
Resource subcommittee only report will be Mr. Roach will be giving a report on the HVAC.
And that's coming up in the?
Yes, it is, yeah, under the superintendent's report.
Okay, great, the policy subcommittee?
Oh, school building needs first.
Oh, school building, school building needs, thank you.
School building needs, that was the HVAC, or school building needs.
Okay, and the policy subcommittee? That was.
So that was Aiden Horgan and Tom, and they're not here anymore. But we do have three policies this evening for second reading.
Okay. Very good. The student support subcommittee.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. The last student support meeting took place on November 29th, 2023, and we approved the minutes. And there was also an athletic update. Mr. Todd Robbins, director of athletics, gave an update on the fall and winter season with a breakdown of how many students participated in the various sports and personal records set by four cross-country athletes. The athletic director also stated that our students are exposed to open sports opportunities. And he gave another update on the Thanksgiving football game held in Boston, where our students' participation and feedback was great. Superintendent Thompson was very impressed with the participation of students, and we are grateful for that. So I asked the question about capitalizing on sport coaches, sport coaches to help students with their academics and to be able to use every strategy available to begin closing the existing academic achievement gap. I received the following suggestions at the meeting. First, implementing clubs, also to take a look at sports that cut kids that are not performing to the desired level, and also to encourage students to participate in sports like track and field, where there is no cuts, et cetera. And then we could work with the coaches, our teachers could work with the coaches to help with the academics. Also, we talk about the athletic fees. And this was addressed at the last meeting in my absence. And it's on the agenda for tonight. Moving forward, I suggested to take a deep look at the Massachusetts Department of Elementary and Secondary Education for Administrative Standards and the various indicators designed to improve teaching and learning and to encourage more participation of these standards and indicators indicators at all schools to better support our student body. Of the four administrative standards, instructional leadership, management and operations, family and community engagement, professional culture, of these four, at the last meeting, we talked about student support areas that were slightly in alignment with the administrative standard number two, and that is management and operations. Due to the limited time, you would see how we barely scratched on a couple of aspects that fall under the environment indicator. And that is the social emotional well-being of our students and also students' health and safety. And so we talk about team sports for addressing social and emotional well-being of our students. And this is important, Madam Mayor, and everyone that's in attendance and those that are listening by social media. It is very important for our students because sports is not only a major contributor to economic development, but it also extends far beyond physical fitness. Studies have shown that sports profoundly impact students' social and emotional health and school connectedness. And I am highly interested in improving teaching and learning in our school district. And so we are striving to position our students for academic success. Additionally, it was stated that the trip to Boston, which I mentioned earlier, was a success and that our students were safe returning home. And it was mentioned that we did not lose a single student during that trip. And so here, I applaud coaches and chaperones and encourage them to continue to keep our students safe because safety is the most important thing, and it falls on the management and operation on the environment indicator. It is important to note that the environment indicator with safety on the front line needs to be addressed equitably across the entire Pittsburgh school district, not only for athletes, because safety is important for all of our students, with special interests in the federally designated students. And these are students such as students with disability and with language barriers and of diverse ethnic backgrounds that form a part of Pittsburgh Public School District. Consequently, we encourage all principals to be vigilant at all times to keep our students safe. Another point, we also talk again about recruiting, hiring, and retaining educators and administrators that are representative of the student body. Superintendent Thompson's suggestion was it is not a job for the district alone to hire, retain, to hire and retain administrators and educators. He stated that we need the intervention of our mayor and also organizations such as New View, Pittsburgh State University, and others to work collaboratively by providing the opportunity for affordable housing and reducing tuition at the university to enable faculty, to enable faculty to forward their education, et cetera, et cetera. It was said that the human resource in our district is using Handshake website and that they have attended a number of career fairs to recruit administrators and educators of color. And it was suggested that maybe a flexible work schedule like with the one Desi gives to a couple, they give a couple of days to work at home. And that this methodology was the reason why our only black administrator in the entire district left the Pittsburgh Public School System. Now, for the agenda for the next student support subcommittee, I am leaving these subtopics with plenty of time because the last time I tried to get them in, and you know, I needed more than 48 hours. So these three questions that I have, environment indicator falling under this safety, the first question is, what are we doing for the safety of our special education students who formally complain about being physically and sexually abused at their schools? Number two, under the human resource management and development indicator, under recruitment and hiring strategies, my question number two is, are we making intentional effort to recruit, hire, and retain a black principal at Memorial Middle School for the 2024-2025 school year? Or is it the same plan as we have been using for the last two or more decades? Unfortunately, this reminds me of some folks wandering around the wilderness for 40 years making the same mistakes over and over. My third question is on the law and ethics and policies indicators. Question number three, sorry, and this is a very delicate question. Are we all walking down the straight path for ethical behaviors when making decisions and addressing complaints? Thank you very much, Madam Mayor, for the opportunity.
Thank you, Dr. Knight. Any discussion on the student support subcommittee report? Okay, seeing none. We will move on to the school personnel subcommittee report.
No reports.
We have no report at this time. Okay, and moving on, we welcome our new student representatives, Selena Moa and James Cannon. Thank you for joining us.
Welcome, everyone. I just have a few things to say about our two new student reps. So I'm excited to announce our two new student reps who will be serving from January 1st, 2024, to December 30th, 2024. Selena Moa and James Cannon are both juniors at Pittsburgh High School. Please join me in welcoming both Selena and James to the school committee. And Selena and James, you want to talk a little bit about, take some time to introduce yourself, talk a little bit about who you are and your current interests at Pittsburgh High School.
Okay. Hi, I'm James. At Pittsburgh High School, I'm part of the band, marching band, and I'm also in drama club. And I've been doing the school musicals for the past couple of years. So I'm also involved in community service, and I'm in the National Honor Society. Thank you.
Welcome.
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 See you.
Hi, my name's Selena Moa. I'm also a junior at FHS. I'm very involved in our community. I'm president and historian of Save Promise Club and Mind Matters Club at FHS. I'm also in Step Up to Excellence and a part of National Honor Society.
Welcome.
Those are great resumes. Thank you, thank you for joining us. Congratulations.
So our two student reps do not have reports for us tonight. They just wanted to come and check out school committee, meet everyone, and they'll be reporting out on our next school committee on February 5th.
Okay. Can't wait to hear that. Thank you, Superintendent. Okay, moving on in the agenda, we have the approval of the minutes from the regular school committee meeting of December 11th, 2023. Do we have a motion for the, that approval? Of the minutes? Second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and second to approve the minutes. Unanimous, I will take this under unanimous consent? Okay, thank you. Those minutes are approved. Communications, do we have any communications at this time?
None at this time.
Okay, no communications. We have public comment. We have, public comments of no more than five minutes of length were invited to be submitted to the superintendent by email by noon on January, Monday, January 8th. Do we have, thank you for joining us. Do you have, did you perceive any public comments?
I did not.
Okay, so anyone in the audience wishing to make a public comment of no more than five minutes of length are welcomed to join the podium. Seeing none, we will move on to the superintendent's report.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, welcome. So just quickly, before I hop into my more detailed report, I wanted to welcome two new members of our school committee members, actually, three new members, our Madam Mayor, Sam Squalia as our chair. In addition to that, we have Mrs. Deborah Jeffries and Mrs. Lindsay Engle, England. Congratulations, we're glad to have you on our team. Is there anything you'd like to say at this time?
Thank you for having us. Thank you, looking forward to working with everyone.
Same.
Welcome.
Welcome, everyone.
Thank you.
I'm really excited to get a great team to be working with for school committee. And welcome back, Mr. Walsh, we're glad to have you back. All right, so thank you, everyone. Next piece is soon, I'm sorry, our subcommittee assignments. Sam went over those subcommittee assignments. There were no questions. But just to let you know, I did provide to you the dates of our subcommittees throughout the school year. Our next subcommittee meetings are on January 24th for student support subcommittee and the policy subcommittee, and then January 30th for resource subcommittee and school building needs. So this is the calendar of the meetings from now until the rest of the year for you to have, okay?
And the times and locations of those?
Yep, those begin at 5:00 at the central office on the, in the first floor conference room. So 5:00 to 6:00 is typically the first meeting, and then 6:00 to 7:00 is the second.
Can I add a?
Yes, yes.
Did you want to mention that the personnel subcommittee is also starting its negotiations with the seven unions? And they will be meeting soon.
Yes, absolutely. So we did start negotiation with the FEA, which represents our teachers, our paraprofessionals, our clerical, and our custodians. We had our first meeting on December 13th to discuss ground rules and other logistics. And we are actually having our second meeting this coming Wednesday at 6:00 PM at Memorial Middle School.
Okay, if I could just add one thing to the building needs and resource subcommittee meeting does have a, it meets in person and virtually as well.
Right.
Any questions on subcommittees calendars? And these meetings are subject to change. We do sometimes have to change them. We give you notice in advance, but we'd like to give you some idea of when they'll be scheduled, so.
Yes, I have a question on the subcommittees. Are all of our school committee members welcome to join the subcommittee? And, or is it confined to those members?
Nope, they're able to join, but when it comes to voting, only those members can vote.
Great.
Great. All right, thank you. And then my next item is to talk about the naming of our track facility at Crocker Field. This evening, we are joined by Ed Gaskengay, a retired Pittsburgh High School guidance counselor and track and cross-country coach. Mr. Gaskengay is here this evening for the purpose of the naming of the track, of the new track facility at Crocker Field after two former track cross-country coaches. I'd like to invite Mr. Gaskengay up to discuss the proposal. And then for the school committee's information, I included in your packet the information Mr. Gaskengay gave to me, in addition to the school committee policy regarding the naming of facilities. Mr. Gaskengay.
Thank you for having me. I'm not going to belabor some of the stuff that I gave you, but if you walk into Crocker Field today, you notice as you walk in a lot of bricks with names of former students and coaches and so forth. And I think it brings a very warm feeling to an otherwise cement structure with a McCattam track and so forth. And where they started to talk about this beautiful new facility that you're going to be having at Crocker Field, an upgrade to the present facility, I felt very strongly that we might want to consider naming the track facility after two of the great coaches that have ever coached at Pittsburgh High. Their coaching time spans 60 years. 1956, Erki Kooten started coaching at Pittsburgh High, and Chris Woods finished coaching in 2016. And with the exception of maybe two or three years, I coached the outdoor track for a couple of years, and a couple other people did. Those two people coached outdoor track. Outdoor track has, as you're suggesting, no cuts, so all students are allowed to participate. It has 14 to 18 events, depending on whether or not relays are being, which relays are being run that afternoon. Literally thousands of young men have participated since 1956 with the first grade Erki Kooten started coaching. You probably, I'm going to speak a little more about Erki Kooten only because I don't think, Pete Stevens knows him very well, worked with him, and I'm sure coached alongside of him. But most of you don't know him. He was an Olympian, as you have read. And he was a, you know, if you read Barney Keenan's letter that he sent in, Barney was nominated into the Hall of Fame the last induction. And he came two or three days early, and he started walking around Crocker Field. And all those feelings that he expresses in his letter were about Erki Kooten and what Erki Kooten did for him. Barney Keenan, back when, back in those days, you had general course, business course, college course. And if you weren't in the college course, you did not go to college. Business people went on to work in the business field. Barney was a general course student. But after he left, after he graduated, he went to prep school in Maine, then he went to the University of Maine, and he became an educator and a very successful person. He comes back every once in a while when he can to help run the West Pittsburgh Road Race. But my point is simply that Erki Kooten inspired hundreds and hundreds of athletes. So I think it's fitting, as we walk into this new facility, I would like to see more than just stones and bricks and a rubberized track and new artificial turf. I'd like there to be a feeling when parents spend three hours with their children in a track meet, sometimes all day if it's a, if it's a track facility on a Saturday, that they walk around and maybe they could see a plaque of Erki Kooten, Olympian. And a man who gave so much of his life to young people. And also, as you see in your packet, I'm recommending that Chris Woods be included. He gave 40 years of his coaching life. I got the numbers down. He coached for 96 seasons, counting cross-country indoor and outdoor track, 96 seasons, 87 consecutive. He had no life other than track and field. And Eric coached Chris Woods for two years. I was lucky enough to coach him for two other years. So Eric was a mentor to him. And I think in the end, Chris probably at least equaled or maybe surpassed his mentor with all the years he put in. So I just think that, you know, I can't really add much more than those things. I'd be glad to try to answer any questions. I'm not exactly sure whether it would be a plaque or how we would do this, but if you're familiar with Crocker Field, the backside has that long back stretch where you can buy the flagpole. That's where the pole vault is run, long jump is run back there. And it would be nice if we had a couple of plaques explaining briefly the accomplishments of these two great coaches as parents walk by, as students walk by, in between their events. And I think it would be an inspiration to give a little more life to a beautiful facility that we're going to have. So I ask for your consideration. I understand that the vote is going to be taken on February 2nd, which is?
February 5th, February 5th.
February?
5th.
5th, okay. My mind's not too good anymore. I can't remember those things. But anyhow, I'd be happy to answer any other questions.
And this is not changing anything. I'm not in disagreement with what you're doing. I'm just, I just remember when I coached there also a long time ago, Mr. Steve LeBlanc, how long did he coach there at the high school?
You know, I'm not exactly sure how many years Steve coached. He did coach the girls. He was, he was very good.
Right.
I don't think he coached anywhere nearly as long as Eric or, but he was a very fine coach. And I know Steve quite well, worked with him also. He was the computer guy in our guidance office.
Right.
I know Steve. He's fact, he just recently moved back to Lemasa from Florida, so he is around here.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. I don't know the exact number he is. Yeah. I don't know the exact number of years. I'm sure we could find out.
Yes.
Ed, Mr. Gaskengay, I've known Ed for quite a few years. He used to live next door to our neighbors up on Sheldon Road. So anyway, but I'm glad you did this. I know Chris. And we meet a friend and walk up at Sima Park every week with our dogs. And as you cross the first bridge, there's a very large boulder with a bronze plaque talking about Erki Kooten's accomplishments. And it'd be nice to see something like that at the field, recognizing not only what he did before he was a coach, but what both he and Chris have done as coaches of young men and women who were interested in, in track and cross-country. So I.
I mean, Chris Woods is just, it's mind-boggling. He is a no-brainer. He's, the hours and the hours and the hours that he put in at Crocker Field and for the kids of Pittsburgh, it's just, it's crazy, you know? Give you an example. I, I took over for Erki for two years, and I was going to try to coach three seasons. And my wife said to me, "It's either me or track." So I cut it down to just cross-country. But Chris Woods didn't listen. He went on. But anyway, no, it's a no-brainer. The guy was, the guy's been fantastic. And he's still officiating. He's, yeah. They're both, they're both giants in the field. And that's a great point you made about track not cutting. We used to take two buses. The first meet of the season, we'd go to Keene, New Hampshire. And we'd take two busloads of kids. That's how many kids we had participating. You know, 100 kids getting off the bus at Keene. And Erki, here I am, a Division III guy, and here, I'm going with an Olympian, and he gets off the bus, and he introduces me to Jack Mays, who was the coach up there, and he says, "This is Ed Gaskengay. I'm working with him. He's working with me." Elevating me suddenly from a punk to, you know, to be on a side of an Olympian. That's the kind of guy he was. He just magnificent person. I'm sorry that more of you didn't get a chance to know him, but he could relive a little while again with the plaque and some few comments and people realizing we have another Olympian besides Long Joe in Pittsburgh.
Any, oh, yes, Deb.
Thank you for bringing this forward. I also look at this as a way to inspire our young children. You know, when they go and watch a brother or a sister at the field, and like you said, with parents looking around, but for them to know that we, right here from Pittsburgh, have such accomplished people. So, thank you.
And I told, I met with the Crocker Field Committee, and I told them that we have many people who are willing to donate to whatever the cost will be to put the plaque or whatever, whatever the committee decides is best to do, you know? I mean, you know, I'm thinking out loud now. I mean, it's, it's not out of the, I mean, I'd like to see it, I guess, in the track, but I mean, it's not out of the question that maybe you have a wall of fame down there. I mean, obviously, there are other great coaches that coached at Crocker Field. But I don't know what the best system is, and I leave it to the committee, and I'd certainly be willing to be part of the voice. But thank you very much. I think you do appreciate what these gentlemen have done. Remarkable. And it gives more life to them. And the point that you make is, a lot of people don't realize that you don't cut anyone. Erki Kooten, we'd have 12 people going down the runway in a long jump, and you could be the worst long jumper, but you had to get your steps. You had to measure out. You had to have your marker. And if you didn't, you heard about it from, whether you were the best or the worst, you did the thing correctly. And that's what he was interested in. And he would, Dick Mulligan, the two people are named, they have two people in Lunenburg, they named the track after. One was Dick Mulligan, another one was a young man who was a track person who died in an automobile accident. But Dick Mulligan was a very good basketball coach, and his boy went out for track. So he quit basketball, and he started coaching track. And he would come to Erki Kooten to learn what to do, because Erki was, was the master. And, yes.
Any other questions or comments from Mr. Gaskengay?
Just thank you for sharing the rich history. I really appreciate it, especially as someone who is new in this group, in this community. So thank you. I appreciate it.
Well, thank you for having me. I really appreciate it, and hopefully this will keep going.
See you on the 5th. Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
So as Mr. Gaskengay said, there is not an action item this evening for naming of the track facility. I felt it was important to get the information out to the school committee and the community. I ask that any community member, please reach out to the school committee members over the next few weeks to give your opinion on this matter. Our next school committee is going to be on February 5th, 2024, at 6:00 PM, and there will be an action item regarding the naming of the track facility. Okay?
Mr. Thompson?
Yes, yes.
Mr. Stevens, I'm also a member of the Crocker Field Restoration Committee, and the Crocker Field Restoration Committee supports this petition.
Good to know.
Thank you, Mr. Stevens. All right. Our next item is regarding our HVAC updates. Over the past several months, we've been investigating how to update several of our, several of our schools' HVAC systems. So this evening, Mr. Roach will provide us with an update and let everyone know where we are and what next steps are. Mr. Roach, would you like me to pull up the PowerPoint?
Yeah, let me see if I can, I need to, I need my, I don't turn that off. Let me see if I can share the screen here. I don't think, let's see. Is that showing now?
Yes, it is. There we go, sir. It worked.
Yeah, so, so we're at a very exciting place to be able to have, have some decisions made, I think, about the future of a number of our facilities. As a quick review, we were awarded, as were other districts, ESER funds. We are currently in the third year of those funds, and those were federal funds that were supposed to support elementary and secondary schools through the pandemic. We currently have, and much of the, the funding was also designed specifically to address aging facilities and upgrade HVAC systems in those facilities. Because as we recall in the pandemic, you know, air quality and air handling systems, and a lot of those factors were of grave concern. So we have a budget for HVAC improvements. We have used, so we have about $6.5 to $7 million from our ESER funds, specifically ESER III. That's the third year rollout, and that's the large funding rollout for us. We also have qualified for and received the IVAC grant, which is improving ventilation and air quality in, in public schools in Massachusetts. That's a million and a quarter. And we can use up to $150,000 of capital expenditure line funds for each of the separate projects. So we cannot go beyond $150,000 because of Commonwealth Regulation 603, which only allows a school budget to be up to $150,000. And beyond that, it becomes the municipality's responsibility for anything exceeding that. So currently, what we're looking to do in three schools, so we had an extensive engineering design done for all the HVAC systems in the schools. The three schools that were identified as most in need of upgrades were our Rhine Gold, Memorial, and South Street. What we really are trying to do in some of this really rare opportunity that we have, HVAC system upgrades are extremely costly, and, and so it doesn't come around very often. So we do have kind of a unique opportunity to, to do it right in the sense of, we want to be environmentally conscious and aware. We want to provide air, heat, and cooling as much as we possibly can, given some of the considerations that we know these systems are going to be in place now for 20, 30, 40 years, potentially if they're maintained well. So we've looked carefully at VRF systems, variable refrigerant flow systems, which take outside air and mix it with refrigerant, the most modern refrigerant. We will certainly have our 410A. We've learned a lot about that, haven't we, Ms. Thompson?
Yeah, we have, we have.
And, and it's completely electrified. So it removes the fossil fuel type of utilization that currently is in place. So that would help us also meet some of the goals that Massachusetts has to decarbonize and electrify, especially in municipal buildings, which provide about 25% of greenhouse gases in the state currently. So municipal and other large organization buildings. That's just a diagram of how a VRF system works. It'd have rooftop units. They would feed into classroom and office spaces. And depending upon the ambient air in those spaces, one room might be receiving warm air, and the next one could be receiving cool air. It really can vary. And, you know, you'd have a control system of some sort that would manage all of that and sensors that would trigger what type of air would be fed into, into the various classrooms and spaces. So there's, there's various pros and cons. We've looked at this carefully as a Resource and Building Needs Committee. Direct unit ventilators, which we currently have, swapping those out is far less expensive. And it certainly is an upgrade to the HVAC quality, the, the air quality in our classrooms. It does not electrify, and we would not necessarily, and it certainly would not provide cooling, and we wouldn't necessarily have rebates potentially for that. The VRF system swap would, would certainly be, you know, a huge improvement in terms of some of the topics I mentioned previous slide. You know, however, it's significantly more costly. I mean, significantly, which we'll see in a second. It does qualify for rebates through Unitil, but there would be some, some other factors like, you know, enhanced abatement issues for asbestos that might be in place in some of those facilities in addition to electrical upgrades, at least at Memorial and Rhine Gold. So currently, working with the project manager that we have, we've been working with ANSWER Advisory for our HVAC system design and oversight. They're our project manager, and BLW is the HVAC engineers. In terms of looking at what is, would work within our budget, it would be direct unit ventilator swap at South Street, but also adding the VRF system at South Street. And you can see the cost there, I think. Yep. On mine, you can't. At Rhine Gold, we would be able to do the unit ventilators, but with a direct expansion coil, which would allow us to then upgrade to VRF without having to do anything additional outside of adding the VRF system when we had the finances to do that. If we were to do all of these, and then working with Unitil, they believe that they can, they can qualify us for almost $300,000 rebate for the VRF system upgrade at South Street. There would be rebates available at Rhine Gold and Memorial at, at the time that we would be able to do it. If we were to do all VRFs, it'd be $13 million. And, you know, as you saw, we just don't have the budget for that right now. We wish we did. But we do think we can be forward-thinking with the unit ventilator swaps. And unit ventilators is basically the classroom and office space heating units. You can kind of think when you walk into one, I'm looking around in here, they don't have one because they have a VRF here. But the, the, it's, it kind of sticks out. It's like a shelf-looking system. There's a grill on top. It provides the, it provides the air handling from the outside vents, but it also provides heat, not cooling. With the unit ventilators we would propose at Rhine Gold and Memorial, we would have that, that direct expansion coil added in, and then we would be able to directly connect to that with VRF in the future, which, again, I think is still ultimately the goal that we would like to get to for some of the concerns that I mentioned again, electrification, decarbonization, and certainly the ability to provide cooling into our classrooms and office spaces, given. I, I remember that first week of the year, this school year, and it was 99 degrees and 98 degrees. And how much do we see of that into September? Certainly August, but into September and even into May, never mind June. You know, we don't know. None of us knows exactly. But I think we should be thinking about that type of thing when we have, again, these very unusually rare opportunities. Some of our unit ventilators are in the 40, the 50-year-old range. They've been maintained well, but they are well beyond their expected useful life. And, and so this is what we're looking to do. We have a number of other projects with that, with our, with our other ESER funding to try to do that's architectural and surveillance system upgrades. But this is a quick update, at least, on where we are with HVAC. So our BLW consultant engineers and ANSWER project managers believe they can get these projects out to bid within about a month and a half so that the work can commence in the summer and hopefully be completed by, you know, the start of the '24, '25 school year. So glad to take any questions, comments, reactions.
Sam?
So we are proposing to swap out unit ventilators and add VRF units in, in South Street Early Learning Center.
The main thing with the unit ventilator is it does provide the H, the air quality, air handling. The VRF really just does cooling and heating.
And so with Rhine Gold and Memorial, the, it was cost prohibitive to, to the VRF, but we're setting, swapping out units that are more efficient and sets us up for future connectivity for VRF systems.
Yeah, Rhine Gold and Memorial were significantly more expensive in the cost estimating for several reasons. Both of those buildings will need electrical upgrades, which costs about half a million to $750,000 at each site. And they both would have significant abatement costs, meaning asbestos is in any building built before 1973 or whatever it was. And, and so they, they would require a significant amount of, of that cost as well. We're, we're pretty excited about South Street because we're also looking to do a roof replacement there and then add a solar array, which would really offset a lot of the electrification of that VRF system. We would be, be able to reduce, you know, our reliance on fossil fuels then as well, because the HVAC system would just be that, and it would be working not to provide the heat and the cooling, which, which obviously is a bigger draw.
And for one of our older schools, Long's Joe Middle School, we have the solar array. We've done asbestos abatement in the roof. I have heard, you know, we have the new windows, and I've still heard concerns about heat, if getting hot in the classrooms.
Yeah, no, that's a great thing. And I think the good news with Long's Joe is we have a Mass School Building Authority-approved boiler replacement project, which will happen this coming summer. And that's a $2.25 million project that's 80% funded by the state, MSBA. And that will significantly, now with new windows, new doors, new roof, solar ready, envelope is completely redone, which should significantly improve some of the, the heating loss and even, you know, in the hot weather, you know, heat getting in. With new boilers, that has a four-zone system. That really is going to help us a lot with the ambient air in that building. And it can, and it can, you know, that one is, that building is, is a challenge right now. But I think the boiler project is really going to be kind of like the icing on the most recent cake that was done this past summer.
And, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Roach, I think it was a few years back when we had all these ventilation studies done. Out of all these schools, I think Long's Joe was actually, came back saying it was actually well-ventilated. Do you want to talk a little bit about that?
Long's Joe, you know, just completing the, just completed the window-door project. And actually, the closeout is happening now with the project managers for that project. But the architect that designed the, the system, and he's done hundreds of these, you know, and, and works in conjunction with MSBA a lot, so he does a lot of school projects. He said it is the, the best-designed building for airflow that he's ever seen. And it's one of the reasons why Long's Joe almost hardly ever, if ever, has had mold. The air flows right through that cupola at the top of the building through sort of a, a system design when it was constructed, that he marveled at, quite honestly. So it, it is designed extremely well, and, and it has, as we know, great bones.
And for cooling plans for the future for Long's Joe?
Well, so, so those are factors that I think, again, you know, we're, we're in a, and I think, as a district, in a position where we do need to look at ways that we can provide that and ways that we can do that type of HVAC improvement in our facilities. can provide that and ways that we can do that type of HVAC improvement in our facilities without significantly increasing the energy draw. So, I do think we have to look through sort of capital planning, some of our other buildings as well because, again, it's hard to know exactly what the future holds, but the suggestion is that the, the climate is warming and we're going to, and we're going to continue to see some of those extreme temperatures that we saw at the beginning of this particular school year and we may see again in the spring.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Other questions for Mr. Roach?
Making HVAC fun.
Yeah. We've learned a lot about HVAC.
You sure have.
I mean, Mr. Roach is now an expert. I can dabble in HVAC upgrades, but it's.
And explaining it, that's it.
It's been a, it's been a interesting few months learning a lot about this in our building, so I've enjoyed the work.
And it's a great opportunity to have. Thank you for.
And I now know what HVAC stands for.
Yeah, that's right. Me too. I think.
All right. Thank you. All right. Moving to the next item, I think we are now moving underneath the budget items. So, our first one this evening is we are recommending a line transfer of $280,000. These funds come from line items that have not been fully expended for a variety of reasons this year, such as unfilled personnel costs, later start dates of personnel hired, later start dates in personnel hired at a lower salary than we budgeted for in the beginning of the year. So, these items will help support three initiatives that we have going on. The first one is after-school programming at Memorial in Longs Joe in the amount $160,000, $80,000 for both sites. That will support the after-school programming. Professional development for ESL teachers in the amount of $100,000. And then instructional supplies and needs at four schools, Pittsburgh High School, Memorial, Longs Joe and Goodrich, in the amount of $20,000, $5,000 each, for each school. Any questions?
None.
Okay. All right. And then, next, we have several donations this evening to accept from our community members that were donated to Pittsburgh Public School students to distribute to all our families and students for the holiday season. I am thrilled and really emotional about the amount of donations we had this year from our community members. The total value of all our holiday donations was around $14,279, which was amazing. I wanted to thank all of our community members for their generosity during the holiday season. This evening, I will actually read each community donation that came from the community member or community organization and let you know how much they donated. Just a really special thank you to Luisa Fernandez and her team and Donna Hildreth at Central Office and all the Pittsburgh Public School staff for really organizing this for our students. It's, it's excellent to see our community come out during the holidays. So, there's 15 donations. I have one that's not associated with any holiday gifts and I'll start off with that. That is from Hannafers Grocery Store in the amount of $288 to support a variety of student activities at Pittsburgh High School. The remaining 14 donations are all for holidays, okay? And I'll read each one. So, we have from the Rotary Club of Pittsburgh East in the amount of $1,000 for holiday gifts for our students. We have from the Pittsburgh Fire Department in the amount of $2,500 for toys and gift cards to our families and students for the holidays. From Elite Construction and Design Incorporated in the amount of $2,500, we have toys and clothing to be distributed to our students and families for the holidays. M&amp;M Tree Services in the amount of $250 for gift cards to be distributed to our students and families. From Community Leadership Institute through the North Central Massachusetts Chamber of Commerce with the estimated value of $1,500, toys and gift cards. Kim Leach in the estimated amount of $100 for new toys and clothes. From the Pittsburgh Recreation Department with an estimated amount of $1,000, toys and gift cards. Doris Valancourt in the estimated amount of $500 for winter coats for our students. From the Pittsburgh Board of Health in the, in the estimated amount of $100 for gently-used winter coats. From the South Street Early Learning Center cafeteria staff in the amount of $100, gift cards for our students and families. Rheingold Elementary School cafeteria staff in the amount of $50 for gift cards. Pittsburgh Public Schools Nutrition Services in the amount of $379.44 for nine food baskets for our families and students. For, from Fitchburg's, I'm sorry, from the First Baptist Church of Pittsburgh in the estimated value of $800 for gift cards. And then last but not least, we have from Hollis Hills Farms in the estimated value of $3,500, 50 natural Christmas trees for Pittsburgh Public School families.
Great. That is very generous, Jen. Thank you so much.
Absolutely. And I just thank you, everyone, for their donations. The smiles on our families and students' faces were amazing, so thank you, everyone. Any questions on the donations? Those will be action items for you to accept this evening. All right. Last but not least, we have three policies this evening for second reading. So, I'll go over each of the three policies with you and give you a quick, a quick, brief synopsis of each of the policies and what we're proposing and then open it up for questions. Okay? So, policy number 5217.01, participation in high school interscholastic athletics and extracurricular activities. This is a revised policy. Our current policy is not compliant with the MIAA, so it, we must, we must do revisions to ensure compliance with Rule 58 in the MIAA handbook. The changes include, students must pass at least two of the four required major courses in each academic period. To be eligible for the fall marking period, students are required to have passed and received full credits for the previous academic, from the previous academic year, the equivalent of four traditional year-long major English courses. There is no minimum GPA and there is no minimum of credits. So, for policy, that was for the first policy, for policy number 5118, collection of pupil information policy. This is also a revised policy. There was a sentence change to allow parent guardians to opt out as opposed to opting in to take surveys. And then for policy number 5103.02, enrollment of children of personnel policy. This is a new policy. This policy will allow us to attract talent to the district by giving educators an opportunity to travel with their children and allow them to attend school in our district. Student, and just for your information, remember, we're doing this, part of this reason is because we closed school choice this year for K-8, so we put this policy in as an option for our staff to attract their, to allow their students to come to Pittsburgh Public Schools with them. So, a couple of highlights of this policy. The superintendent has the right to make the final decision regarding acceptance. Staff must request in writing to the superintendent. Students will be assigned to a school based on space availability. Staff are responsible for transportation of the student admitted under this policy and students of staff will not be allowed to remain in the district if the staff member ceases to be employed by the district. And those are the three policies. Any questions? Back to you, Madam Mayor.
Thank you, Superintendent Thompson. All right. We'll move on to action items in the agenda. We already voted on 24333, so let's take up 24334 to approve the superintendent's recommendation to allow the line item transfer approved by the Resource Subcommittee as noted in the amount of $280,000.
Ma'am, make a motion to bundle action items 24334 through 24-352.
Second. Is that a second?
Yes, Dr. Lee.
Okay. We have a motion to take all action items together. Do we have any, any question on the motion? Any discussion? Okay. All right. We'll take this by unanimous consent that we will do that. Okay. So, all action items are now up for discussion or motion?
Make a motion to approve the bundle, 24-334 through 24-352.
Second.
Okay. Motion and second on the table. Any discussion? All, all approved, unanimous, we'll take this by unanimous consent? Okay. All action items are approved. Thank you. And we have no executive session at this time. Adjournment is next on the agenda. Do we have a motion to adjourn?
Yes.
To adjourn?
Second.
Motion and second to adjourn. We'll take this by unanimous consent and we are adjourned. Thank you.